It's now a little after six. I'd like to call to order the Regional Planning Commission Business Meeting for Thursday, Aug. April the 10th. I don't think we're in August yet. April the 10th. I asked Mr. Peterman if he'd lead us in the pledge, please. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I would ask if you have a telephone or other electronic device that you either put it on vibrate or turn it off so it won't interfere with our meeting. I now ask you, sir, to call the roll and determination of court.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Serravon?
Present.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Galvery?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
You have seven yeses in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
We also have in front of you commissioners the agenda for tonight's meeting. If there's no additions, corrections, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Davis?
I move.
Second.
Mr. Mills, second. Call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
We also have on the agenda tonight the approval for the minutes of March 13, 2025. If there's no corrections or additions or anything, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Galvery?
Second.
Second from Mr. Peterman. Call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of approving the minutes of March 13.
Thank you once again. Next on the agenda, you can see the Levy Court action. If you have any questions or anything, please see staff at a later time. Now we're going down for the business of the night. First is old business. First on the agenda tonight is SL-25-01, The Landings North Reconsideration. Request for a major subdivision. Approval for 10 single-family lots located outside the growth zone overlay district. Would Mr. Peterman, would you like to make a motion?
Question on the motion first.
Okay, hold on. We have a question first about the motion.
On the question on this particular, the landing north, did the school transportation from that district ever approve of the picking up of the kids?
We haven't received any additional correspondence from the school district.
I don't think we can hear you, sir, speak.
We haven't received any additional correspondence from the school district.
Okay, Mr. Mills?
Well, I got another question for the applicant, if that's possible.
Well, we've already had, we've already had discussion on it tonight. We're really just voting on it, so I don't think we'd be calling anybody to the microphone. So, Mr. Peterman, would you like to make a motion?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission grant conditional approval of application SL-25-01, The Landings North, primarily planned for the 10 lots, single-family residential subdivision located outside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on Exhibit A, staff recommendation, report date March 6, 2025, Exhibit B, public hearing testimony dated March 6, 2025, and the findings of the fact that the subject site is zoned AC Agriculture Conservation, in which a single-family residential subdivision is permitted use. The application complies with Kent County Comprehensive Plan. Pursuant to Chapter 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to Non-Delaware Code 4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements and planning staff recommendation as described in March 6, 2025.
I'm sorry, this is Denise. I can't hear anything.
Ms. Carter, you can't hear anything? Nothing at all? Mr. Serravon, are you able to hear us?
I am, but you can hear some kind of electronic interference on the line.
I'm unable to hear anything.
You'll have to bear with us. We have a whole new computer system in front of all of us tonight, and you can imagine how some of us seniors have to get through some of these things.
Yes.
So, I'll ask Mark, is there any way we can contact her?
Yes, I'm going to send her a chat and ask her maybe to log out and log back in, and hopefully that appears, repairs the connection. From what Mr. Serravon is saying, he's able to hear us, but I guess there's some static on the line, and we're able to mitigate that once it leaves the building.
Well, what I'll do is go ahead and let Mr. Peter go ahead and finish the motion.
Okay. The applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements and planning staff recommendation as described in the March 6, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, including but not limited to the following conditions. All required landscaping shall be installed prior to the insurance of any building permit, prior to the final plan approval. Clarify the purpose if the access easement between lots four and five, if the purpose is to serve the residential lot. Integrate the easement to the lot. Given the low density and the real nature of the subdivision, waivers from Section 187-53H-2 and 187-58H-2 and 3, 187-60A, 187-60D, and 187-904 are approved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter? Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
I'm voting no, and my no reason is based on public safety.
Mr. Davis?
I'm going to vote yes. I vote yes very reluctantly. When we address the issue of safety of young children in school buses, we're not getting the answers that we should be getting. And I think that everybody should be aware of that road. It's on a bend. There's a lot of issues there. They might be in all the county codes, but the school has regulations. And I think if you look in the Delaware statute, it talks about our decision processes, if it affects the health, safety, or welfare. There's no other question in my mind that affects the safety of young children. I am going to support it, but I'm not very happy about it because those questions have not been answered, and it appears to me they haven't made any attempt to answer it. And I just pray to God that some little kid doesn't get killed out there waiting for a school bus on that bad road. Thank you.
Mr. Jester?
I vote yes.
So you have five yeses, one nay, one absent, in favor of granting conditional approval of application SL-25-01.
Thank you, and good luck with your project. Now we get into new business for tonight. First is S-25-03, Spring Meadow. Request for site plan approval for a 9,100-square-foot industrial park located inside the growth zone overlay district. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Galvery?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission grant conditional approval of application S-25-03, Spring Meadow Business Industrial Park located inside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on the staff recommendation report dated April 10, 2025, and the findings of fact that (a) the site is zoned BG, General Business, in which a business industrial park is permitted use; (b) the plan complies with the conditions of the approved per 205-73.D; (c) the plan complies with the comprehensive plan. Pursuant to Chapter 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to Non-Delaware C Subchapter 4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements and planning staff recommendations as described in the April 10, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, including but not limited to the following conditions: (a) detached signage shall be of similar material as the sign for Spring Meadows development to the north. The signs shall be no more than 32 square feet in size, no higher than six feet from grade, and be located no closer than five feet from the front property line. (b) The bike rack large enough to accommodate at least four bicycles shall be added to the site plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Davis, second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter? Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve for motion.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have six yeses in favor of granting conditional approval of application S-25-03.
Thank you, and good luck with your project. Next under new business tonight, we have SL-22-01, Mulberry Meadows. Request for final approval for 104 single-family lots located inside the growth zone overlay district. And I see with their plans and their updates that they have put in a bus stop, and it's off the road and all like that, and it looks like it should work out very well. So, is anybody, would somebody like to make a motion? Anybody? Mr. Davis?
Okay. Another issue I have about bus stops, where's that? But I'm not going to get into that tonight. I move that the Regional Planning Commission grant final plan approval of Mulberry Meadow, a 104 subdivision located in the growth overlay district. This is based on the findings of fact that the plan complies with all conditions of approval and letters and no objection from relevant agencies that have been submitted in the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Peterman, second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve for motion.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of granting final plan approval to application SL-22-01.
Thank you for your willingness to change the plan, and good luck with your project. Next on the agenda tonight is Ordinance LC-25-2, the impervious cover, non-resident, pretty much explained last week. Chris did a good job of that. And I don't know if anybody has any more questions, but I entertain a motion for tonight. Who'd like to make it? Mr. Galvery?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission recommend approval of Ordinance LC-25-02, eliminating the impervious cover limits for non-residential development. This is based on the fact that Levy Court already eliminated impervious cover limits for residential developments inside the growth zone overlay district and the Kent Conservation District's letter of no objection.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mills, second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve for motion.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of recommending approval of Ordinance LC-25-2.
Thank you very much, and the county, good luck with your project. Negative, sir. That's the next one we're going to be working on right now. Now we're going to go to Ordinance LC-25-03. I'll now entertain a motion for this impervious cover outside the growth zone overlay district. Would you like to make this one too, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, glad. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
I move that the Regional Planning Commission recommend approval of Ordinance LC-25-03, eliminating the impervious cover limits for development outside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on the fact that Levy Court already eliminated impervious cover limits for residential development inside the growth zone overlay district, and no objection from Kent Conservation District.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Mills, second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Serravon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter? Mrs. Carter?
I'm going again. What is this?
Mrs. Carter? Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of recommending approval of Ordinance LC-25-03.
And I'd like to personally thank the county. As we streamline our ordinances and all like that, it's going to be very helpful and much easier to handle with the paperwork, as I know when I used to be in the survey field. Now we're down to public comment. I see a couple public. Do you have anything you'd like to say? You'll have to give your name and address, and the attorney will either swear or affirm you.
Richard Wheeland, 123 Wee Chief Lane, Smyrna.
Mr. Wheeland, do you swear or affirm that the testimony or your statements are going to be true?
Yes, I do.
You're right ahead, sir.
The top of your agenda says that the public can give testimony on the applications. You've already voted on it, so I'm just adding icing to the cake, I guess.
Well, in our business meeting, I don't allow anybody to the mic. We always do that in the public comment meeting, which was the week before.
Okay, we just found out about it. We'll take it up with Levy Court later, but I live directly behind the Spring Meadows application site, and it's a lot of building on a small lot, and we wanted to add some conditions about noise and operating hours and so forth. But I guess we had to take it up with Levy Court.
Take it with Levy Court, and you can't take it with Levy Court?
It's a site plan. It doesn't go to Levy Court.
That's correct. I've been corrected on that.
Where do I go? Tell me where to go.
Sarah, you have any, you have any suggestions for this young man?
At this point, the plan is code compliant, and it has been approved. We can certainly give him the contact information for the applicant to see if they could come to an agreement on their own.
So you need to contact the planning department?
Mm-hmm.
And right in the building opposite of where you pay your taxes, and like Sarah says, that they'll be able to, glad to give you information.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you coming to the mic. Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? No more public comment. I'm down to commission comments. Mr. Davis?
I'd just like to bring up something that I think that needs to be addressed probably with the ordinance changes or addition. I reviewed the letter Mr. Walton had sent to us on April 10 regarding Mulberry Meadows subdivision, and I noticed that, that there's issues addressed to Kent Conservation District, Delaware Department of Transportation, State Farm Marshal's Office, Kent County Public Works, Kent County Division GIS 911, public water. You know, I think it's about time that we get the asterisk of the court to consider these issues, these subdivisions concerning school bus pickups. They all have regulations. It's a statewide regulation, and everybody takes it very lightly. We're talking about the potential accidents happening. This one that I did vote for because he met all the code. Nothing said about the school pickup, the bus parks. My concern, and we'll take that particular application we voted on this evening. They pull off the side of the road. Where are the parents going to park in the afternoon when it's raining and it's snowing to wait for the bus to come and drop the kids off? That's a safety issue, and that's a serious damn issue. And we overlook this thing. One of these days, we're going to have some small child that's going to get run over. This needs to be addressed. It has to be something put in the ordinance, something that the planning department requires the school district is to respond. You ask everyone else to respond, and they don't have a problem with it. I think it needs to be addressed. Mr. Mills has been driving the school bus for probably 40-some years and not longer. I know he's 100, but he's been driving a long time. But he brings up a lot of valid points, and I agree with him. We're not addressing that issue. And we do have a responsibility as to look at safety issues, health and safety and welfare of the neighborhood, and we're not doing it. So, I'm not saying this in a smart way. I'm not picking on anybody. But I would like to see us have a, have a receipt from the school that they looked at the plans, they don't have any problem with it. Now, so many subdivisions, they got, there's some kind of a rule of thumb that if it's, if it's over a half a mile, then they can come in. If it's less than half a mile, then you got to walk. There's one particular case tonight. They walked down there, and they got a little de-acceleration lane where the bus is going to pull in. You got people coming in and out. You got all that traffic on Parry Tree Lane, or Peach Trail, I'm sorry. And you got parents sitting there waiting for the kids. One of these days, they're going to see the kids run over by some person who's not paying attention. I think it's time we start paying attention, and they have to let the court look into it. I would really like to see what the proposal would be because I think we have a big responsibility to protect the lives of people, and particularly young children. Thank you. If anyone else wants to comment, feel free to, if you want to disagree, I don't have a problem with that. That's just how I feel about it very strongly. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments?
I do.
You got a comment?
Okay, because, okay.
I have a comment on that same issue, too. I think, don't think we're involved in protecting these kids as the way we should. Now, I've got the code out of the Delaware School Bus Contractors, Delaware State Contractors, of what, how kids are to be picked up and how they're not supposed to be picked up. If a development is a half a mile within, and we do not know that from looking at these testimonies that we're getting, if it's a half a mile inside that development from the entrance, the kid is eligible to be picked up inside the development. It says right here, and I'm not going to read all this, but I'm going to give you the headline, highlights of it. It says right here that if a school bus goes inside of a development, they have to provide a safe and adequate place for a school bus to be able to go in and turn around and be able to come back out. Another safety issue, even though whether it's a half a mile or not, if there's a curve on that road within 100 feet, well, let's see, "Bus stops in a curve shall be visible from both directions." If the bus cannot be seen 500 feet, that's 35 mile an hour, or 1,000 feet if it's over 35 mile an hour, located to stop if possible, or request a stop, school bus stop, a head sign. Now, you talk about turn lanes. Turn lanes become a three-lane road. That means that the traffic coming towards the head of the bus does not have to stop. Think about that. If a kid getting off that bus, and it's a three, it becomes, got a turn lane in it, and the bus stops, that turn lane is considered as the third lane, and a car coming forward does not have to stop, and a kid got to cross the road. And that's where the school district should determine whether that child, whether that bus can stop along that road, or whether he's got to go down, turn around, and come back so he's on door side. I know all about this because I'm doing it every day. So I think we need to, I don't know how we can, we can't make them do it, but emphasize the fact that the developers have got to take a little better look at how they're planning their, planning their developments out so that we can make it a lot safer for children. Just the other day, just the other day, on Williamsville Road, I had a little kid get off the bus. I called him across a road. An apple fell out of his bag, and what'd he do? Turned around and followed that apple to as far as it was rolling. And then the car could have, could have got him anytime, but just lucky they were all stopped. So I'm just passing this on to you. I think we need, what have we got to do to tighten up on the regulations on developers, planners, to develop their developments so that a bus can get these kids picked up in a lot safer manner than what we're doing right now?
Mr. Peterman?
I agree with, I just want to say I agree with Mr. Mills and Mr. Davis on this. I think if we had to go to Levy Court and testify for this, I think that we should. That should be put in a code, and the developer should know this, and that should be settled before they can build a first house.
Thank you all. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Mr. Galvery?
From what?
Sarah, you have any comments on that?
I don't believe there's anything for me to comment on. I'll discuss it with the Levy Court Commissioner.
That's what we want you to do. That's what we're going to ask you to do. I can't tell you what to do. We're going to ask you, you would approach that and give us a report on the feelings of Levy Court about proposing something that's going to protect these kids. And as soon as you get that done, I'd appreciate that, and so would the commission. Thank you.
I think the commissioners ought to contact their ones that appointed them to, each one of you separately, and tell them how important a matter this might be, and you can individually talk to them, and we'll get something started and all like that. So thank you all for what you did. Any other business before the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Mr. Peterman made the motion. Mr. Bill, second. Mr. Peterman made the motion, Mr. Bill's second. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Peterman? Mr. Servon?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to adjourn.
Thank you all, and we'll see you next month.
Sarah, do you want these, uh, do you want these plans, do you, left in the box? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank, thank you.